First city council meeting of the year here on April 19th. I hope everyone has had a good new year so far and will continue. First thing I would like to do is have a call to order and roll call.
Council member Jimenez.
Here.
Council member Penrose.
Here.
Council member Rarback.
Here.
Vice Mayor Reddick.
Here.
Mayor Brownstone.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I would now like to open up our public forum for folks who are here for the first time. If you would like to raise your hand and there's a raise hand symbol in the bottom right of your screen. Is that the same for everyone, Jessica, for all attendees? I think it is. So all you have to do is raise your hand and you will have three minutes to speak. And that'll be timed and Jessica will give each person of speaking a 30 second warning. When they only have 30 seconds left, so after two and a half minutes, you'll get a 30 second warning. So with that, let's begin.
Okay. First, we have Brent Turner. Brent, go ahead.
Thank you, Jessica, and good evening, city council and welcome council member Jimenez. Just wanted to mention that I've been seeing some things in the news about cities and towns taking a very aggressive position regarding COVID response and vaccine administration. So I'm hoping that we can also stay on top of this to the best of our ability. Obviously, the circumstance is very, very dire, but we're seeing some light with the new administration coming in. So thanks to all of you for your efforts in these very trying times. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Thanks, Brett. Next, we have Eric Hollister.
Thank you, city council, for hearing me. Welcome, council member Jimenez as well. I just, two quick points. Let's see, the delineated parking program that you or situation you guys have set up on a bunch of streets, one of them including Kelly, which is one I live on, seems to be working with the exception of the need for red paint in areas that are not delineated parking spaces so that San Mateo County sheriffs can actually enforce it being parts of driveways, that kind of thing. But I wanted to mention that it is working. I have talked to Mr. Doughty with City Works and I have I have mentioned it to him as well. I think the program works. I think it would behoove at least the members, trying to get as many folks here on Kelly to speak up as well. It would definitely behoove the city and us as well to move forward with that pilot program. And as I'm sure you can imagine, it's also adding to the ticket or to the revenue, rather, to the general fund. The other point I need to talk about is the intersection at All Say Soren and Kelly. There needs to be more stop sign presence, both heading west and even eastbound on Kelly, right at All Say Soren, which is why the sheriff's deputies park there. They're pretty good about enforcing it. But it happens extremely frequently, whether it's on a weekday, on a very slow day, or on a very busy day. More so, I think there needs to be, I believe the city council needs to look at some sort of either raised crosswalk going from the south side of Kelly's sidewalk to the north side of Kelly's sidewalk. There is both sidewalks there. The reason I bring up the raised is because there is a fire hydrant, a fire pole, I mean, a power pole and a few other things right there. So getting in and actually creating a down sort of ADA access may be more difficult there. But the reason I'm bringing up the other part is All Say's heading northbound, dead ending at Kelly, is we had a close family friend whose son and actually daughter was briefly hit. And luckily, the mother in the white SUV stopped to ask if her son was okay and whatnot. But road rash being the most severe aspect of it. Whether it's tourists coming down or even people in a hurry, we're living in the neighborhood, there doesn't seem to be a lot of look to the right. And there is a down ADA access into the street with the yellow bumpy plastic on that section. So there needs to be more stop sign presence there. Luckily, the kid wasn't hurt. Luckily, he was wearing his helmet. I believe according to his mother, his only fault is he didn't stop to tell the mother that it hit him. Hey, I'm okay, this, that, and the other thing. But needless to say, I think that intersection needs to be more heavily looked at. I've mentioned it to John. I believe he can support that information to you. And I believe he and Maz also have great suggestions and thoughts on that. So please, as a safety measure, can we please look forward to looking at this as either a future item on the agenda or at least even off the agenda? Because at this point, we can't see another child or mother situation like we had at Pillarsitas in Kelly a few years back. It just happens every day. People blow a stop sign mistakenly every day. Sometimes they're not paying attention. Sometimes it's a feral gas truck going to state parks. But in many directions, that intersection needs to be relooked at. So thank you so much for your time. I know you guys have a lot of important stuff, so I look forward to speaking with you soon, hopefully.
Okay, thank you, Eric, for your comments and suggestions.
Okay. Next, we have Michael Stogner.
Thank you, Jessica, and welcome, Joaquin. And happy new year to all of you. I hope you have an excellent and safe year this year. I just wanted to mention Sandra Lee Harmon one more time. And I'll probably be doing it for quite a while. Also, I wanted to make my request public, the one that I sent an email to all of you except Joaquin. You weren't on the council yet. So I just wanted to make it public so that you guys understand. And also, I have never recommended anybody ever sue or go to court in 20 years of working as a private victim's advocate. So I, this is, I think this is a unique case where I'm asking you, or a unique scenario, where I'm asking you to sue Sheriff Carlos Bolanos for the release of the Axon log records. And I have a couple reasons why this should be a pretty good idea for you. One is I understand that the superior courts are backlog over 500 cases currently because I've been involved with sheriff, former sheriff deputy Juan Lopez, who's been in the criminal system for six years now. So I don't think there's any chance of this case going to court. Two, there is a current, there's actually now two current candidates for sheriff, which will be probably wrapped up by June of next year, so 18 months. And three, when and if, if you, if the city gets sued, you know, for per homicide, which is likely, you could at least show, hey, we've done everything humanly possible to get to the records. If Mark Melville happens to win the election, he is guaranteeing you that he will deliver the Axon log records the first day he's in office. So it's really kind of a strange thing. And I'm not even sure if Sheriff Carlos Bolanos is refusing to turn over those documents. My understanding is that it's County Council David Silverman. So I believe a lawsuit is a perfect thing for the city, if you could.
30 seconds, Michael.
That's the one. Joaquin, welcome. Great to see you there and everyone else. Great to see you, all of you. I think before, I've said it before, I think what you've done is historical to stand up to get to the truth. So I wish you the very best and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Michael.
There are no other public comments, Mayor.
Okay, the public forum is now closed. We now will move on to proclamations and presentations, and I believe we have a presentation from Mid Coast Community Council for an update.
Yeah, Len Erickson will be providing the update. Len, go ahead.
Welcome, Len. Thanks for being here with us.
Thank you. My greetings to the city council, the new mayor. Happy to just give a brief introduction to the Mid Coast Community Council for the coming year. We've met already once, but our serious reorganization or organization meeting comes this coming Saturday when we'll have a retreat with ourselves, supervisor Horstley, and the public. We've already know we have on our agenda a final draft of the Connect the Coastside study coming to us, long in the waiting. And sure to take a certain amount of consideration. We've also have on our upfront agenda, the Medio Bridge or the Marata Pedestrian Bridge, which has been closed for some time, calls a replacement and sits right on the border between the city of Half Moon Bay and the midcoast. So we'll be considering that. At this point, until we get our retreat underway, I don't have too much more to share relative to our perspectives, except to say we have several of them that will sure to take up a lot of time. There any questions you have of me now? Be happy to answer them, but other than that, it's a pleasure to be here.
Any questions?
Thank you, Len.
Thank you.
Excellent. Let's see, mayor's announcements of community activities, community service. I don't believe I have any announcements, Bob, were there any specific things? Okay. Moving on, Catherine, a report out from recent closed session meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. The council did meet in closed session earlier this evening to discuss two items. The first was a conference of real property negotiators regarding San Mateo County APNs. 056096240 and 480, another parcel, 056125210, 056127030 and 040. And finally, 056128090 with negotiating parties, Thomas Gearing and Daniel Gearing, to discuss price in terms of potential acquisition. The council also met to discuss another item of anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation based on receipt of letters from Thomas Gearing dated July 27th, September 11th, October 1st, and October 21st, 2020, and took no reportable action in closed session.
Thank you, Catherine, for that report out. We're now going to move on to our city manager's update to council, which will include a number of staff updates. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also want to say happy new year to everyone. It's nice to see everyone. Nice to see you, council, again. Mr. Mayor, council member Jimenez, nice to see a new council. And also to the public, nice to see some familiar names in our public audience tonight. It has been quite a while since we've met, over a month, I think. It was a very nice break for staff, but it does feel good to be back, I have to say. I think the rest of the staff feels that way as well. But we do have a few updates tonight, since we haven't met in a while. And we'll go a little bit out of order. Matthew will take the first three and then Maz, your city engineer, will take two. And one of them does relate to some of the public comments we heard from Mr. Hollister tonight regarding the T-striping that we, the pilot program, we tried out in those neighborhoods a couple of months ago. So that will be a report out from Maz shortly. But we'd like to start with the most important topic, and I'll turn it over to deputy city manager Chittister to do an update on everything, COVID, testing, vaccination, et cetera. Thanks, Matthew.
Thanks, Bob. Good evening, council. We'll actually start with Jessica Blair, our communications director and city clerk. She will provide some updates just on COVID statistics and where things are at with the shelter in place order, and then I will take it from there. Let's go.
Thanks, Matthew. And next slide, Colleen. So as everyone's aware, the Bay Area region was put under the stay-at-home order on December 17th. And San Mateo County is included in that, and we were placed under that stay-at-home order due to ICU capacity falling below 15%. We remain under 15%. We're at 7.4% right now. And what the state looks at is a region's ICU, projected ICU availability four weeks out. So right now, they're looking at what our ICU availability would be four weeks from now. And then, once they determine that would be above 15%, then we would know more as to when we would exit the stay-at-home order. Once we do exit the stay-at-home order, we would still be under the purple tier for widespread spread of COVID-19. So right now, the changes or that outdoor dining is also closed. And then there's the 14-day requirement for quarantining for anyone traveling into the region from other areas. And next slide, please. Some more specific numbers for San Mateo County. The current case count as of the last update today, 32,596. The cases by city are updated weekly on Fridays. And so as of this past Friday, Half Moon Bay had 605. The current positivity rate in San Mateo County is 9.7% and there are three ICU beds available in the county. So that's all I have as far as updating on case count in the stay-at-home order. And now it's turning it over to Matthew, who will talk about testing and vaccinations.
Thanks, Jessica. Next slide, please. So just a reminder that the city continues to support the county's efforts and offer testing in our community every week. We continue to test at the Ted Adcock Community Center every Monday from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. I will say, except for on holidays, so we did not do testing yesterday. And then President's Day is the only other holiday I'm aware of in the immediate future on a Monday. If you'd like to register, the link is on the screen, or you can call 1-888-777-1690. Additionally, if you just go to the city website and go to our COVID page, you can find links to not only our test sites, but also the county has other testing options available throughout the county. Senior Coast Siders, as a great partner, continues to offer testing on Thursday mornings from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., except for holidays. I'm not aware of any Thursday holidays coming up, so I think we're in good shape there. That testing is for adults, older adults only, 55 and up, and their caregivers. And to register, you can go to the site listed below or call Senior Coast Siders directly at 650-726-9056. I just want to express again our gratitude to all the staff and volunteers who continue to make this possible. We have a really, really dedicated team of volunteers, who, many of which are certs or coming from our community partners on the coast side and really make it possible for us to serve a lot of people each week. I did want to address something that came up, and I think many of you are aware of. A little over two weeks ago, the FDA issued a communication, that's the official term for it, on curative testing, which is the testing lab and company that we work with through the county. And that communication notified folks that there was a risk of false positive results or false negative results through these tests and listed a couple of the reasons for why that might happen. Most of it is related to people getting tested too close to exposure. As I think most people know, if you think you've been exposed, you need to wait at least five days before getting a test because you will get a negative result if you test in those first five days. Your body is not built up enough antibodies in your system to register on any of the tests that are available. So as long as people wait the five days and then as long as the tests are administered properly, the risk of a false negative is minimized. And we believe that the protocols the county has given us and the work that we do on a weekly basis really puts us in a good position to prevent false negatives. There's always a risk. No test is perfect, but we believe this is still a good and important service for the community. And the turnout continues to show us that there's strong demand. And of course, we'll follow the county's lead if they make a change in the future. Other counties have switched to different providers, but I think the risks remain the same. Next slide, please. So on the vaccination front, we know that there is a lot of communication and confusion out there around vaccinations. I'd like to provide a little bit of information to help clarify and eliminate some of that confusion, although the information changes on a pretty rapid basis. And so it's important to, on the next slide, I'll show you some places you can go for up-to-date information. So the county of San Mateo is directing the efforts in San Mateo County, and they're following the federal and state guidelines for prioritization of vaccine issuance. We are currently in Phase 1A as well as Phase 1B Tier 1 for distribution of the vaccine. Phase 1A was focused on healthcare workers and individuals living and working in long-term care facilities. From an equity standpoint, I think it's really important to point out that healthcare workers is not restricted to medical providers. It's really, it really expands to anybody that works in the healthcare industry. So not just nurses and doctors, but techs, janitors, the registration staff, anybody that works in a healthcare setting is part of the Phase 1A priority list. And that's, the same goes for those in long-term care facilities.
Matthew?
Phase 1. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt, because I was a little confused. Does Phase 1A also include 75-plus?
It does, it does. And as we heard early last week, Phase 1B Tier 1 expanded that to 65 and older. And so anybody that's 65 and older is currently eligible to receive the vaccine. Unfortunately, that doesn't mean that it will be currently available for you at this time. And so it's important that individuals that are 65 and older make contact with their healthcare provider, their primary care physician, to start that process because it is taking time to get people vaccinated through that process. As Phase 1B Tier 1 continues to roll out, individuals working in education and childcare, emergency services, and food and ag, including our local ag workers, are also included. And so we believe in the next couple of weeks, they'll start receiving the vaccinations. The next tier is Tier 2, which includes transportation, logistics, manufacturing, other essential services, and congregate settings, which includes those that are incarcerated and those that are homeless and much like the long-term care residents, anybody who works with those populations. Following that, Phase 1C really expands it to a larger number of workers as well as anybody 50 and up or any adult 16 and up that has either a disability or complicating healthcare, health issues that put them at risk for severe negative impacts of COVID-19. The timeline for this is really fluid. They, as we've mentioned, they've been vaccinating folks from the healthcare and long-term care industries for the last month or so. Phase 1B, the 65 and up, started last week, although we've heard lots of challenges with getting those vaccines. Next slide, please. So the county's been really clear about how to get information. Unfortunately, the information they receive changes on a regular basis, and so it does take a little bit of work to stay on top of this. The primary way in the state of California and across the country that people are receiving the vaccine is and will be through their healthcare provider. Most of the doses are going to the large healthcare systems in our area. That's Kaiser, Sutter, and Palo Alto Medical Foundation, the Dignity Healthcare, and the Seton Group. So the ideal thing to do is get in contact with your healthcare provider or primary care provider. If you have county-provided health benefits, you should still work through wherever you receive your healthcare to schedule an appointment once you're eligible. To understand when you're eligible and to get more up-to-date information, you can go to the county website. The link is there, smchhealth.org/covidvaccine. And then the state website is covid19.ca.gov. Our understanding is the state is in the process of developing a registry where people can sign up to be notified when and how they can get the vaccine. So if you go to the state website, hopefully in the next couple of days, that will be live and people can gain access through there. Unfortunately, there aren't a lot of ways to get additional information. The county tried setting up an email process to get information, and that became overwhelmed immediately. And when the state announced the 65 and up eligibility, the county's 211 line, which serves a lot of other purposes as well, became overwhelmed as well. Most of the healthcare system's phone lines are also overwhelmed. I've heard lots of stories of people waiting on hold for three and a half, four hours to get ahold of somebody to schedule an appointment. The good news is I have heard that many people have been able to get those appointments and people are getting vaccinated within their eligibility groups. Hopefully, as the state makes more efforts to roll out a better vaccination process, they've promised larger mass vaccination locations to provide more vaccinations to larger groups of people. And the healthcare providers are getting up to speed with providing electronic scheduling of COVID vaccine appointments and additional support to work with their members. A couple of things that are really important right now is to be wary of scams. I've heard several stories of especially seniors in our community being asked to fill out a registration form that includes questions like, what is your social security number? And other private information that would unlikely ever be asked for this kind of a process. I think the real key is if someone reaches out to you and asks you for information to get you registered for a COVID-19 appointment, just be really wary and careful. And if anything seems wrong to you, save the information and contact your healthcare provider and make sure that what they're doing, the person you're talking to, is legitimate. The other important thing I think that for everybody to remember is the vaccination is there to protect the individual being vaccinated. And it's a two-step process. For the Pfizer vaccine, it's two shots, three weeks apart. And for the other one, it's two shots, one month apart. And once you get that second shot, they say it takes about two weeks to build up the immunity, which means you can become infected the same day you get your shot or even a week. which means you can become infected the same day you get your shot or even a week later. And so it's really important that even after you've been vaccinated, that you continue to follow all the protocols we have in place. You have to socially distance, you have to wear a mask, you still have to be very careful with who you interact with and how you interact with people. At, at this point in time, nothing really changes for anybody, even after getting the vaccine. At some point, we'll have enough, enough people vaccinated that we can start seeing changes in those sheltering place orders and, and social distancing requirements. But we, we want to make sure people don't think there's a peace of mind that once you get the vaccine, that one, you can't get the disease or two, you won't carry it to someone else. We have to be just as diligent and just as careful going forward. We've also heard some questions about the county's mass vaccination site over in San Mateo at the event center. At this point, I have not received any confirmation that anyone other than verified healthcare workers can receive vaccinations there. And it's also my understanding that all of their, their vaccinations there are accounted for and all those appointments are full and will be exhausted over the next week. That's all I have for COVID and vaccinations. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those now, otherwise we can move on to the next part of the presentation.
Any questions from council?
No, but I
Go ahead, yeah.
One point, and that was that even after you've had both of your vaccination shots and two weeks have passed, you are immune, that does not mean that you are not a carrier or can't become a carrier. So for the protection of everybody until there is a statewide or at least county-wide order saying that social distancing or masks are not required, people should continue to observe both.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Deborah. And you know, this will be a continuing conversation around updates because they're it's constantly new information. And I think our key messaging is we can't let our guard down. You know, we don't know. You know, we, we hope that this vaccination protocol will hold up for, you know, six months, a year at least, but we don't know for sure. We hope that the current vaccines will work against new strains of COVID. But we really don't have enough data yet, you know, it's just being gathered and these strains are new and just coming into the country. So, you know, I caution the whole community, you know, let's keep our guard up and act responsibly and, you know, keep wearing our masks. And don't be rushing to increase our bubbles, you know, our social bubbles especially until we're, you know, really have a handle on how effective our vaccines are for everybody.
There is one other thing I wanted to add. You know, the county recognizes that especially in our immigrant communities of color, there's a lot of history of distrust in healthcare and in government. And it's, it's valid, given the history of, of healthcare in our country. And so I'm participating as well as others from the coast side in a work group, a county-wide work group that's really focused on the communication and equitable distribution of the vaccine to our community, our vulnerable communities. And so there's a really strong effort to make sure that, that our, these communities that are vulnerable and, and have a history of distrust in healthcare receive the right kind of messaging and the right kind of support and, and as many barriers as possible are removed so that as, as they become eligible for the vaccine, that they can take advantage of it safely and confidently. So I'm grateful that the county recognizes that and grateful to be a part of that effort.
Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate that.
Okay, next slide, please, Colleen. Okay, I wanted to provide you with an update on the Coastside Inn Shelter. As many of you know, at the end of two thousand twenty, the county moved forward with their plan to acquire the Coastside Inn and converted into a shelter to support our, our local homeless population. And, and that has moved forward. Next slide, please. So currently, the county is in its pilot phase. They decided before the end of the year to move into a pilot to immediately provide access to homeless and some homeless individuals to start to provide services. And this would not only help several individuals move out of homelessness, but also provide a good way to see how things operate at the hotel as the planning for the long-term full program is developed. So for this pilot project, the county selected Samaritan House, which is a local nonprofit based out of San Mateo. They also operate a shelter in South San Francisco as well as they've been operating one of the Project Home Key sites during COVID. So they're a temporary provider just during the pilot. And this pilot is restricted to adults only. The discussion of families and other types of residents will be part of the planning for the long-term program. To gain entry and to be part of this pilot program, individuals have to be referred through the coordinated entry system. That's a standard program that's administered countywide to ensure that anybody receiving homeless services from the county and its partners receives the right kind of intake so that the right kind of information is collected to provide the best services and to ensure a fair and equitable process for getting people services. Currently, as of today, there are nine individuals that are residing in the Coastside Inn Shelter. Contrary, and, and I think I want to be really explicit, I want to correct a lot of misinformation out there. All of those individuals, all nine of them, were previously unsheltered on the coast. Some of them had been put in Project Room Key Hotels in, in the past few months as, as part of that program and were brought back to the coast side once this became available. And others came directly out of the encampments and, and out of homelessness on the coast side into the hotel. There's, there's rumors going around that the county just took people from other hotels and other parts of the county and has actually increased homelessness in Half Moon Bay. That is absolutely untrue. They've held true to their promise to make sure these are for coast siders only, and that's how it's been used. There is room for up to fifteen individuals, so they're currently screening another six individuals for this pilot process. And I've received notice that the county has received one single complaint from a neighbor and that complaint was resolved through Samaritan House. I don't have details on the, exactly what the complaint was for, but that it was resolved. The city, I don't believe, has received any complaints about the operations that have been going on for about three weeks now. Next slide, please. So for the long-term planning, as, as discussed in the public meetings leading up to the end of the year, the city and county are in the process of negotiating an MOU. And this MOU contains some, some requests, some commitments, some plans based on what we heard from the community during that public process. And so the, the real point of it is to ensure that the city is involved in the planning and the operation of the facility on a long-term basis and is able to provide support as well as input as that moves forward. The county is also in the process of preparing an RFP or an RFO for the long-term operator. RFP is a request for proposals, that's kind of a long standard process that allows a variety of agencies to submit proposals to try to operate, be the operator here long-term at the hotel. And RFO is kind of a condensed version of that. It's a request for offers. And this would be limited to three local providers that have already been selected through a previous RFP process for shelter services. Those three providers being Samaritan House, who's currently operating the pilot program, Life Moves, who operates several shelters on the peninsula and provides the case management services through our hot team here on, on the coast side, and Project We Hope, which operates a shelter in East Palo Alto. The RFO process would be quicker, and I think that's the preferred approach. But the county has not yet ruled out an RFP process. All of this is geared towards hoping to start the more permanent operations in March or April. One of the important things we heard from the community and is included in the draft MOU is the development of a community advisory task force. And this would be a group of individuals, including government representatives, service providers and community members from the coast side to provide input, feedback and general information about how to best operate this shelter here on the coast side, how to resolve community concerns and, and really just how to make sure this shelter operates in the best manner to provide safe and healthy operations for the homeless as well as the surrounding community. This task force will be staffed by city staff as well as members of the county human services agency and representatives from the selected operator from the RFP or RFO. It's expected that this task force will convene for at least a year or longer, initially meeting on a monthly basis and then maybe going to a bi-monthly or quarterly basis as, as we get deeper into operations. And there will be an application process that will allow individuals to express interest in participating. We expect the group to only be about six to eight people. And so there will be some criteria to develop to make sure we have a diverse and representative group working on the task force for the period moving forward. So we'll provide updates on all of that as that moves forward. But the county is actively working towards all of this and believes that the pilot program is going well and that good outcomes will come from even just the pilot program. Are there any questions on, on that?
Matthew, in terms of the task force representation, if somebody has expressed violent opposition to the whole project, would they be invited to be on this task force?
So they'd be invited to apply for sure. I think when I say we want a diverse task force, I think one of the things we want in diversity is a diversity of opinions. We want people who are critical of operations and critical of the process that can provide that kind of critical look at how things are being done, as well as people who are supportive or working with the homeless. I think one of the criteria will be an ability to work with the other advisory task force members so that it's productive and moves forward productively. But, but certainly being against the project will not prohibit somebody from eligibility for it. And, and frankly, we want to have some people that, you know, have expressed concerns or, or were against this initially to make sure we have a variety of opinions on this task force.
Thank you.
Deborah?
Yeah, I, I object to that. I, I think if anybody is opposed to the project, they have no place being on an advisory committee to help us figure out how to run the project. If they are skeptical of the project, that's something different. Or if they are fearful of the project, that's something different. But anyone who is violently opposed to the project does not belong on an advisory committee for the project. Makes no sense.
Yeah, and I think that's the key is if you're, if you were against the project, you have to be willing to work productively forward with the group, right? We, we don't need somebody participating in this that's goal is to short-circuit it and, and have the, the project not move forward. So I appreciate that perspective.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add as well, and Councilmember Penrose, it is our recommendation, and this is how we have proposed it in the draft MOU, that this is not a council-established committee. If it's a council-established committee, then it then is a standing committee subject to the rules of the Brown Act. So our recommendation is that staff, myself and staff are directed through the MOU when the council approves the MOU to set up this task force and use it as is outlined here and will be outlined in the MOU. So in that case, we, we take the comments we're hearing today and we'll go through the application process. But I just wanted to put that out there, and that's certainly something that the council can also discuss if there's differing opinions on whether or not that should be a, a committee of the council.
One just clarifying question, Bob. As a task force, are those meetings recorded?
I, I don't think we, I don't think we've thought about that yet. We certainly could, it's not necessary, that's not even a, a detail that Matthew or I had, had even considered yet.
Right. So, you know, just one comment about, you know, people on that advisory task force. The term violent opposition, I guess, subjective, you know, whatever, and determining that ahead of time is hard to say. But I certainly think, you know, we should have people who may be skeptical or anxious and because when they bring up their questions, you know, and they might be resistant to some things initially, you know, they may be, they're probably speaking for a lot of folks. And the more we feel that everyone's, the whole idea of an advisory panel task force is to address, you know, all the concerns of the community. So, you know, there's nothing, nothing better than taking on that skepticism and, and answering questions and putting people's, putting people's minds at ease and getting over, you know, getting through their concerns. So not to mention, people come up with good ideas as well. So we want as many good ideas when people have concerns.
I'd like to just mention that I think the meetings should be public. People ought to be able to view and participate in any deliberations of the advisory committee. I wouldn't want it to just meet, you know, out of public view and provide input out of public view. You know, part of the, the beauty of having citizen involvement is having a transparent process so that people can engage with it. And, you know, the, the process benefits not just, you know, the residents of the homeless shelter, but it also benefits the public that's engaged in the process. And I want this to be a mutually beneficial process. So that's going to be important to me. I don't know if it's that the council appoints it or what, but these should be, you know, open and public meetings as far as I'm concerned.
Hey, I'll, I'll comment. How will we determine who's going to be part of this task force? Is it going to be an application? Or is it like an interview for the community members?
We don't have the details nailed down yet, but there will be an application process, probably similar to the interest people express to serve on a city commission or committee. And we'll, we'll definitely have some criteria worked out beforehand so people know kind of how we're making the decisions. I don't expect there'll be an interview process. It just probably depends on how much interest there is or if, if there's a, you know, a hard decision to make between one or two people.
And, and if I may add one more comment, a follow-up to Councilmember Reddick's comment and my previous comment, we, we completely agree with that. I mean, the, the definition of this group, at least the way I see it and the way we've defined it in the draft MOU begs for a public process and public input. That, that is their mission is to be that liaison between the public and the operation of this facility. So we completely agree with that. And so just as that then pertains to my previous comment, again, our recommendation at this point is that the, the, the direction is for staff to establish this group. And by doing that, they're not then subject to the Brown Act. But we can, we can clearly still allow the meetings to be public. And, and again, by definition, we want to hear from the public. That's, that's one of the primary missions as we see this commission. So I just wanted to point that out. If I'm, if I'm starting to move out of my lane, City Attorney, Ms. City Attorney Engberg, please jump in on the differences there. And I, that, thanks.
I, I agree with that summary.
More information is good. It's what gets people through their concerns. Less information, that's when people will create their stories around it. So, so agreed. Great. Any more questions about the shelter before I move on to the next update? Okay, I believe the next update is on the purchase of Eighty Eighty Stone Pine.
Thank you. This will be a short one. Next slide, please. I just wanted to inform the council. This is an item that has been brought before you many, many times over the last several years. And I just wanted to inform you officially that the city closed escrow on the acquisition of 880 Stone Pine Road on Friday. If, for those who don't recall, this is a 21-acre parcel at the end of Stone Pine Road. It's been owned by Post over the last 10, 12 years. The city uses it as its corporation yard. And as Post desired to no longer own this property and the city saw that this was the really important site to maintain our operations, we were able to negotiate a fair acquisition of the property. As you remember, the state has also approved a loan through the infrastructure bank that it oversees at a really competitive interest rate. And we're in the process of finalizing the loan documentation so that we can get reimbursement of the funds that we expended to make this acquisition as well as fund some really necessary and immediate safety and security improvements on the property. I believe John Doughty, our Public Works Director, will actually be bringing an item before you at the next meeting in relation to that project. But we just want to thank you, council, for your support. This is a really important facility for any city to be able to continue to operate. It's used as the storage and staging location for all of our public works projects and equipment. It's an important storage and staging location for emergencies and emergency equipment. And it's where our public work staff operate out of. And to have a permanent site, this is our first permanent site that we've had in many decades for this city. And so this really does position us to make some important decisions for the future and make sure that the city can provide some of its most essential functions to the community. So appreciate your support. We appreciate the partnership and the collaboration with Post that went into this. Portions of this property were reserved for a nature trail along the creek that hopefully we developed in the coming years. And we expect, once we've worked out the use of this property for public works yard, we'll be able to look at other low-intensity public uses. It is, there's habitat on the property and it's protected, but we believe there can be some beneficial public uses down the road once we've assured that we can use it in the way we need to for public works. Any questions on that?
Not a question as much as a comment. I think we should be grateful that Post has been as patient as it's been for about 10 years. They have been a really good partner. And finally, I'm thrilled to think that we're going to acquire this property. I think these additional uses beside the courtyard sounds very exciting. And I'm, as I said, grateful to Post, grateful to the city for working this out. And I really think this is a win-win for the city. So thank you all.
Harvey, I appreciate those comments and 100% agree. There's quite a history to this and city. Yeah, I think the city, this resolves some long-standing concerns and issues. And, you know, we're doing right by Post and we're doing right by the city. So thanks for those comments.
So I'd like to just point out, thank you to Post. It has been a long process. I've been in and out of this process for many, many years. And I'm very happy that it's concluded. But what I want to call attention to was the aggressive and detailed staff work on the part of our deputy city manager, Matthew Chittister, as well as our city manager and our city attorney. This was a very staff-intensive project. They pulled it together with what I consider extreme competence. And it moved along relatively smoothly given the history. And I want to say, you know, thank you to our staff for, you know, pulling this important project off. And I also just want to add that, you know, we heard several of the presentations tonight about COVID and testing and different things. And again, a thank you to staff. Well, we've all been, you know, experiencing holidays with our families. A lot of staff work has been going on behind the scenes. You know, making sure that this testing is, you know, abiding by the rules, that the staff is showing up to execute. A lot of staff work is going on behind the scenes and, you know, I'm most grateful for it. So hats off to Happum Bay City staff.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, and if I may add quickly to these final comments on this most important acquisition, we did also receive a very nice email letter from the president of Post, Walter Moore, today. I think maybe a couple of you were CC'd on that. It acknowledged the long time it's been and it also acknowledged that we continued with our commitment in spite of the pandemic, which obviously could have thrown this back into a tailspin. So I will share that, that email from Walter Moore with all five of you. It's a very nice email.
Thanks, that would be great. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I just wanted to say that this is the beginning or at least a continuation of a very good relationship that the Happum Bay City staff and council have with Post. And we hope to continue this relationship, helping them to help us to preserve our open space in the way that we want it preserved. And thank you for making this work.
You're here. Thanks, Deborah. Any other comments before we move on from the Stone Pine acquisition?
We have two more, Mr. Mayor. Next up is our city engineer, Maz Borzengina. He's going to start with the part, the beach parking pilot program, the one that Mr. Hollister brought up earlier. So go ahead, Maz.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening, everyone, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Our beach neighborhood parking pilot project ballots went out in December. Sorry, next slide, please. We mailed, the city mailed out approximately 400 ballots to residents that live on the designated pilot streets. We had received 145 responses since then. 60 yes to keep the pilot project moving as is and 85 no to abandon. So with the results, we are looking at our next steps, which would be to remove the existing paint from, from the streets that were, that were completed as well as refreshing of the existing red curb markings in the area. And that was already part of the original project. Given the comments that we heard tonight, we will look at possibly keeping some of the markings on Kelly, which did already have some designated on-street markings to the west, to the east, I'm sorry. So we'll, we'll take a closer look at that and see if we can accommodate that, at least in that particular location. On a side note, I did want to acknowledge that this process was very informative going through the balloting process. And we do anticipate refining this as we move forward for future projects. With that, are there any questions?
I'll let others go. Anyone have questions before I ask a question? Can you remind me when the pilot markings first went up?
September of 2020 is when we put those in place.
Right, so. Yeah, you know, I, I, I'm curious, you know, maybe we'll revisit this again, you know, when we have full, when we're full swing into summer again. I wonder how people, people might feel the same or different or whatever. I'm not sure because doing it in September is making, you know, softer traffic. But anyway, any particular inputs that you could determine as to why people are for it or not for it and what their comments?
There were, there were quite a bit of comments. Some I, some that I read were specifically towards the aesthetics of, of the markings and taking away from the character of the streets. Some of the comments were, were more that they didn't really address the larger issue, which was the overcrowding. That was, that was to some, some residents' thought process. And some other folks just didn't think they were effective. We did have some, although we missed the majority of the summer season, there were, you know, a couple of longer weekends sprinkled in there that we did see a higher number of visitors from, from outside the coast side. But yeah, those were, those were the primary ones that I reviewed.
And the people who liked it, any comments from them?
I think the folks that we, the folks that we talked to that were for it, they generally felt that it was appropriate response and it did help with some of the issues with the overcrowding as far as keeping folks in the designated stalls. It also did have the intended consequence of keeping some of the encroachments off of driveways clear, free and clear. Those were two of the, the main ones.
Got it.
I think, if I could, I think the other thing is that the, those that sort of were okay with it understood more, maybe more clearly that this was a trial run. You know, this was not going, you know, we were going to come back in a year and evaluate it. So, and, and to some extent, we got that almost, you know, we got six months almost out of it by the time we get it out of there. And I, I think there was something to say about it, but clearly the, the folks have spoken. One of the things I will say as a takeaway is that we have looked at some of other jurisdictions and how they handle these ballot measure issues for speed control, neighborhood traffic issues, things of this nature. Some of them, many of them actually require like a minimum 50% of the, of the participant, you know, participating properties to, to vote before that action is validated or whatever. So that's something we, I think we need to look at. If you see the numbers, we had certainly less than 50% response out of the 400 ballots that we did send out, so it was 145. So, you know, and, and most instances, we're going to be in a different, a different situation, which is that the neighborhood is asking us for something. And so I think that probably makes the issue probably less of a, of a concern and issue about getting to that 50% plus number of, of participating ballots. Just something that we've been looking at and as we look at other agencies and what they're doing, that is something out there. This was unique and that we initiated it. They didn't, as a community member, didn't initiate it. So I think the, the 145 responses was, was a good response and, and consistent with what we thought was going to be probably around the numbers. But that's something as we look forward at this, at using this in future ways that we'll look at.
All right. Good work. Glad we got some comments and got some responses. Too bad it wasn't over half, but to be continued. So thank you.
And if I could, to shout out, a quick shout out, communications really helped us a lot on this. Colleen in particular with putting together this ballot item and going out there. So we, we really couldn't have done it without teamwork and assistance from, from our communications staff as well. So shout out and thanks to them for the help.
Great. I thank them as well. Thanks, Jim. Okay. Moving on to our next Tom Lantos Tunnel.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So just, there was an SMC alert that came out recently and we wanted to make sure that everybody had it, had an opportunity to hear about it. So the Tom Lantos Tunnel will be closed starting Tuesday, January 26th at 9:00 PM until Wednesday, January 27th at 4:00 AM. This is for an annual mandatory emergency response drill that has the sheriff's office, Pacifica Police and Fire, CAL FIRE, OES, and, and other first responders that will be physically closing the tunnel for those drills. So motorists that will be traveling northbound will be detoured back south on Highway 1 to 92. And folks that are traveling southbound on Highway 1 to the tunnel would be detoured back up north, north on Highway 1 to 280. So the city will be posting this on all of its communication channels. We want to make sure that we get the word out to, to everyone that they're aware so that the community can plan accordingly. It will be for a very, you know, for a very good cause. It will be a slight impact to folks trying to traverse that corridor. But we hope that as long as the training goes according to plan, it should be relatively short duration and back open before the morning commute hours.
That's great.
There's, there's a link down here too. There's more information if you want, if anybody wants to see the full bulletin. And again, we will be sharing this one on other communication channels. Any questions?
Maz, on a related matter, do you know the status of the generators that Caltrans claims that are going to install to keep the tunnel open when we have an emergency?
I don't at this time. There is, I will be meeting with some of the county public works directors and city engineers a little later this week, where we generally get updates on the larger Caltrans projects. So I will be happy to report back once I get that information.
Maz, I can jump in and Jessica can as well. It's understanding that the generator has been installed.
Right.
And part of the, part of the drill will include the switch over to the new generator when they do this annual drill. So, yeah, good news on that.
And just to add, you know, the background, you know, we had that big meeting, people can remember, last year when power got shut down, folks were trapped in the tunnel. And so there was a response, which was to get those backup generators. Now we're testing them. So hopefully we will have continuity of service the next time there's a power outage. Okay. Bob, just to double check, does that complete all the updates, I believe?
Mr. Mayor, that does.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff, for all that work. It's been a lot. Someone mentioned earlier, there's a lot been done over the holidays and finished and completed. So this is a staff that I can guarantee very often works more than 40 hours a week. I promise you that. So thank you for that dedication. Great work through some tough times. We're going to move on to the consent calendar. We have seven items on the consent calendar tonight. Are there any items that anyone would like to pull? I have one, but I'll let others go first. Does anyone else have an item?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item 1C.
Okay, pull 1C. I will also pull item 1G. So should we begin Debbie with 1C?
Sure, I can do that. I move that we adopt the consent calendar. Item 1A, way reading resolutions and ordinances. Item 1B, warrants for the month of December 2020. Item 1D, approve city's response to the October 28th, 2020 grand jury report entitled "Second Units Adding New Housing in Neighborhoods." Item 1E, agreement with National Demographics Corporation for assistance with 2021 post census redistricting services. Item 1F, grant writing and advocacy services agreement with Towns and Public Affairs, Inc. And that's it.
Second? Do we have a second?
I second.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Rhabak, I'm sure you have a roll call.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhabak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reddick? Vice Mayor Reddick?
Are you frozen?
I think Debbie might be frozen.
I guess we'll have to take that as an abstain for now.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, let's see. We'll wait to see if Councilmember-
Well, let's see. We'll wait to see if Councilmember Riddick comes back on. Why don't I continue with item 1G? Looks like Councilmember Riddick is going out and will come back in.
Okay.
Yeah, on 1G, just have two, two quick changes for appointment to the Peninsula Clean Energy Authority. Just going to switch the names around. Councilmember Rarback will be the designated representative. Councilmember Jimenez will be the backup alternative representative. And for Board of Supervisors, Councilmember Jimenez will be the designated representative and I will be the alternative. And that's it for that.
I'll move that we approve item 1G with amendments.
I'll second.
I'm sure I have a roll call.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, um, so my streaming froze and I don't know if you've done 1C already.
No, 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 we were waiting. I, I did 1G first, so give you some time to go out and come back in. You're on.
Um, so I don't think we need a staff report. I just want to comment that I, I, I'm in favor of Friends of Relationships and I think this one would be beneficial for the city. My concern is that entering into a relationship with a community organization, potentially where money is changing hands. And because we don't have much experience with that, I think it's important for us to have a city policy about how we engage in these relationships. And that might be as, as little as, you know, a template that we use for these MOU agreements. And, um, and so I, it's important to me that the council consider and approve the MOU developed between city staff and the, the Friends of, in this case, Friends of Parks and Rec. And that, you know, we have a discussion establishing a policy about how we undertake these relationships or approve these relationships. So I, I, I don't want to just direct staff to go and like do it. I, I want to see what the agreement looks like and approve it, but I, I want us to understand what our policy is. Because maybe there's other beneficial relationships that might come forward and...
Okay, frozen again.
I would agree with Councilmember Riddick. I, I think the policy could be critical in the future and it's important. So I'd like to have that policy discussion prior to entering into the agreement.
Any other questions or input on that?
Mayor Brownstone, we do have a hand raise if you'd like to take a public speaker on this item.
Uh, sure.
Charzad, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And thank you, council members. And thank you so much, Deputy City Manager, for working so hard with our organization. Again, I'm sorry, my name is Charzad Pantera. I'm the president of Friends of Haplin Bay Parks and Recreation. I want to really thank the city for working with us and also the Parks and Rec Commission to develop this MOU. As you know, we're currently working on fundraising for the playground structure at Frenchman's Creek. But I just, I'm here just to, when this organization was created, it was created with the last city council members. So I understand that, you know, it is really important to set policy when you're dealing with community groups. But just for this group in particular, I just want to have a reminder that, you know, we are the nonprofit arm of the city. So, um, and when we do come back, which we're hoping to come back in front of you and not only to give you updates, but also to request, you know, to work with you. And, you know, we just start with this and we have other parks. And, you know, we have worked on other parks, but just to clarify the relationship and one of the most important parts about this MOU was to really keep the institutional knowledge. As, you know, council members change, committee, committee members, commission members change, we really wanted to keep the institutional knowledge and kind of set that relationship. Um, I think that was one of the main also goals of this MOU. So I just wanted to just be here, one, to really thank Matthew for all the effort he's put into this and thank him. He's been coming to our meetings and really everybody on the planning and on Parks and Rec. And also just to mention this and we look forward to really do, um, working on this, this park and we have a lot of other future projects coming up. So that's it. Thank you.
I want to say thank you, Charzad, for speaking up. I think the way that we preserve, you know, our institutional engagements is by having policy. A policy that's applied fairly, you know, no matter what the organization is. It's having a, a policy sets, you know, the standards for our engagement. So that's, you know, that, that's part of preserving, you know, institutional memory. You can refer back to a policy. So that's why it's, it's important to me. But I think, you know, policy will also define, you know, what Friends of organizations are. And I, I will take issue with this idea that the Friends is the nonprofit arm of the city of Haplin Bay. That's, that's pretty broad and has a lot of implications. So one of the things I want us to do in this policy is, is to define, you know, the engagement, what a Friends of organization is, how we, how we, what the rules of engagement are. When, what are the triggers for council approval? What are the roles of staff? I, I think it's really important to work through that. And the, uh, the, the city attorney might want to weigh in here, but I, I certainly would like when this comes back, you know, to have heard you a little research on, you know, how other cities, you know, conduct these relationships. So this is not, my remarks are not in opposition to the Friends of Parks and Rec. I think that can be a valuable relationship, but it's to establish a fair policy that lives on beyond our particular engagement. I, I hope I described my position on that in an understandable way.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the benefit of having, of setting policies and standards for engagements of this kind is, you know, it's looking into the future. So, you know, now we have a Friends of Park and Rec, but there may be other organizations in the future that will be friends of some other initiative or, you know, citywide organization that wants to help out with some funding. In fact, I could probably think of a few, but that might, may come up looking at some of our objectives moving forward. So it is really important as Councilmember Riddick said at the beginning, you know, when money is exchanging hands, et cetera, we want to, you know, make sure everyone understands good, good operating procedures, policies, et cetera. So, um, so thank you. Is there a motion that you'd like to make specifically?
Mayor, before you make a motion, if I could just confer with Matthew to see, what I'm hearing, I'm hearing that the motion or there's going to be consensus to continue this item, bring it back as an other business item with a draft of the MOU that includes a policy and/or this, this MOU becomes the template for potential future relationships. So I just want to check with Matthew to make sure we know how much time he needs to bring that back before you make a motion on, on continuing it. Matthew, is February 2nd too soon? Do you need more time than that?
And Catherine can weigh in. As far as the draft MOU goes, we can certainly bring that back to you for, so you can actually see the draft MOU on February 2nd. We're very close to kind of a verbal agreement on the draft. It just wasn't ready at time, the publication of this item, which is why we took the approach we did. As far as a policy, Catherine, I, I don't, I don't know how much time we've spent really researching the broader policy issues yet. I, I've done some research in preparing this MOU and looking at, you know, the, the Friends of Libraries and other Friends of Parks and Parks Foundations out there. But Catherine, do you think we could have enough information about a policy for February 2nd?
I, I would like to do a little more research in terms of a policy. We've looked at other MOUs with other Friends groups in preparing this, this item before you. But as Matthew says, you know, there are other Friends of Libraries, other kinds of Friends groups that taking a deeper dive and bringing back the item maybe in a couple of meetings, it's like the second February meeting.
I, I would actually recommend, if there's no urgency here, we go to March 3rd. February 20th looks to be a very busy meeting. So to give us enough time to do the work that's being directed, I would look at the first March meeting.
Okay, we'll have, we'll have both the draft MOU and some policy recommendations and prepared for that meeting. Thank you.
I just want to add that I think it's great that, you know, we have this relationship. And I think it's probably something, given where we might be economically for a while, you know, that we have these relationships with the public. You know, we could use it as far as trash pickup is concerned. I can think of a lot of ways we might engage the public here. So that's why I think it's important to have a policy, understand any liability issues, et cetera. I just want to reassure Friends of Parks and Rec that, you know, we want to work with you on this. That we want to do it in a way that protects all of our interests.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move to continue this item until the first meeting in March with the direction given in terms of bringing back the close to final draft MOU and having the city attorney present some policy analysis.
I'll second.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, everyone. We have no ordinances and public hearings tonight. So we will move on to resolutions and staff reports. And our first item, 3A, is appointments to city commissions. Do we need a staff report on that? Or just move?
Not much, except that following the November election and our newly elected council members, we'll need to make appointments to the vacant commission seats for Planning Commission and Recreation Commission. And then we also have an existing vacancy that Vice Mayor Riddick will need to make an appointment to on the Recreation Commission as well.
Great. So I will move in order now, just so you'll know the order I'm going to go in here. Councilmember Jimenez will recommend an appointment to the Planning Commission and to the Recreation Commission. Then Councilmember Rarback will make recommendations for appointments to the Planning Commission and Recreation Commission. And Councilmember Riddick will make a recommendation for appointment to the Recreation Commission. So, starting with Councilmember Jimenez, would you like to make a recommendation for nomination to the Planning Commission?
Uh, yes, I would like to nominate David Gorn to the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Can we have a vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Vice Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, nomination of Mr. Gorn. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez. For our next nomination, Councilmember Jimenez will make a nomination for the Recreation Commission.
Yeah, yes, I would like to nominate Luis, Luis Otto to the Parks and Rec Commission.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Congratulations to Mr. Arum. Councilmember Rarback, would you like to make a nomination for an appointment to the Planning Commission?
Sure. I'd like to continue my appointee, Jimmy Benjamin, who is one of the most knowledgeable people about environmental issues that I've ever met. So I'd like to continue him on the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, Councilmember Rarback, would you like to make a nomination for a appointment to the Rec Commission?
Yes. My current appointment, Ellen Clark, is leaving the area. I am very grateful for all the work she's done, especially about community gardens. But I need to make a new appointment and I'm going to appoint Hillary Stamper to the Rec Commission.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Do you have a vote?
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations to Hillary Stamper. Thank you. Councilmember Riddick, would you like to make a nomination for appointment to the Recreation Commission?
Yes, I'm going to nominate Adam Eisen. He's a soccer coach. He has two children in the local public schools. He has been a member of our city council and understands how our process works. He has enthusiastic networks of families who use our facilities and our programs. And I, I think he would be a good addition, so I nominate Adam Eisen.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone? Motion carries.
Well, there you have it. We have our commissions filled out. Thank you. And in advance, I'm thanking all these new nominees and appointees to our commission. Thank you for your service in advance. Greatly appreciated. Okay, moving on to our next, our final, no, well, final item for resolutions and staff reports. We will now receive an update on a topic that is dear to every member of the community's heart, which is our economic recovery from COVID-19, development of recommendations toward a more equitable, vibrant, and resilient coastside economy. And I will emphasize that it's been a pretty rough year. And so that's why we first have to start with recovery and really work together as a community to bring our economic situation back to life. So I'm very much looking forward to this particular staff report. And we've had quite a few people on staff working very hard on this, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will introduce this item and then turn the time over to Karen Decker. She's our senior management analyst in the city manager's office and the project manager for this project. I'm going to share my screen. We have a presentation. Everybody can see that?
Great.
Great, thank you. Just by way of background, and we provided quite a bit of background in the staff report, so I'll try to keep this brief. But as, as many of you know, our annual priority setting process that the council goes through includes a lot of public feedback and input through a variety of sources, including our annual listening sessions. And in early 2020 during that process, and I think leading up to it, it became really apparent that economic development and looking at our downtown were going to be important priorities for the coming year. And in March, that was selected as one of your priorities. Many of you will recall during that priority setting session, we already were starting to implement some COVID protocols as it was becoming more apparent that this was an issue even for us on the coast. And it was within a week that everything changed and the shelter in place order took effect. And, you know, immediately the coast side economy, economy was, was hit very, very hard. Some of the main industries that have been impacted by everything related to COVID are, you know, hotels and hospitality, restaurants and small businesses. And that is our economy here on the coast side right now. Of course, there are other sectors that play an important role, but our, our economic drivers are in tourism and hotels and hospitality and all the ancillary services that come with that. We've known since very early on in COVID that some sort of an initiative like this was going to be important. We observed other cities, larger cities, taking on and developing economic recovery task forces, economic recovery workgroups to, to really figure out how to recover from COVID. But as, as those were convened and they started developing their plans and recommendations, I think there was an expectation that we would have been through the pandemic and into recovery many, many months ago. And, and so we just, we decided to, as we developed our plans, wait and see. And we really feel like we've reached a point, we're in the new year. The vaccine is available and being issued slowly, but I, I think there's some, some light at the end of the tunnel here. There's some hope on the horizon that we as a community, along with the rest of the world, can recover from this pandemic and all of its negative impacts and start looking towards how we emerge from this economically, but also just as a community. And, and so we think the time is right to kick this project off. And this is not just an economic recovery, this is really looking at how we recover as a community from all of the impacts that we've faced, our small businesses, our large businesses, our workforce, and, and many of our vulnerable members of our community that have been so negatively impacted. And so we really hope that this initiative, which we expect to, you know, really be a, a major focus for the coming year, but carry over into future years, will allow us to bring the community together and develop some really thoughtful ideas and thoughts about how we move forward as a community, how we look at our local economy and our local workforce based on the changes that we've seen from COVID that are likely here to stay. And so with that, I'm going to turn the time over to Karen and she will talk about our plans for this initiative and how we move it forward. Karen?
Thank you.
Karen is muted. Mr. Mayor, it looks like Karen is having technical glitches. I, I can't hear her. I, I don't know about others. I would ask for a five-minute break and see if we can work this out, if that's okay with, with you and council?
Yeah, that's fine.
inconvenience. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening and I'm so excited to talk to you about the Coastside Recovery Initiative. So let's kick this off with our guiding principles. They have been just our sherpa throughout this whole thinking process. And like Matthew said, we hope to be thoughtful throughout. So first off, using a lens of inclusion to guide this work, lens of inclusion, what does that mean? It means several things. First off, it pertains to geographics. So by coast side, for the purposes of this initiative, the, the coast side is a unified economy. And so geographically, we're talking about the span from Devil Slide, south to the county line and east to Skyline Boulevard. Inclusion also refers to equity. We know that the impacts of the pandemic have disproportionately affected low-income residents, communities of color, and women. And so these cross-sections will be critical components to both task force and focus group representation, which we'll expand on in a bit. And then finally, inclusion also refers to sector inclusion. So from a global perspective, tourism and the hospitality industry and restaurants and small businesses have all been hit particularly hard during this pandemic. And to Matthew's point earlier, it's these very sectors that make up the majority of the local economy here on the coast side. And so inclusion of these sectors, along with others such as agriculture, will be an important factor in managing task force representation. We also want to engage new perspectives. So the coast side are the eyes and the ears of our community. And we want to bring together a broad range of voices to identify challenges and solutions that will be specifically viable here on the coast. This is part of, one of many appeals to the community, anyone who's listening. If you happen to be a transitional age youth with a clear understanding of digital needs of students or a third-generation farmer or a subject matter expert in lending, we just really, really want to engage new perspectives. Institutional knowledge is valuable and, and we need it. We also want to tap into the collective wisdom, the untapped collective wisdom that is here on the coast. And if we're successful in doing that and we're engaging bright minds around the discussion table, that will lead us to our next point, which is innovation. So what opportunities has the pandemic revealed? So for some, working from home or operating a business from home may not only be feasible, but likely in terms of forging a path forward. So I look forward to really drilling down on more innovation as the initiative gathers more momentum. Short-term wins. So this is in regards to low-hanging fruit that need not be expensive nor time-consuming. And there are very real examples that I've witnessed over the last year, working with school district staff, nonprofits, other municipalities. And some of those real examples of things that we can achieve here on the coast that have already occurred are securing personal protective equipment donations during supply shortages, increasing food bank volume in response to food instability, rent flexibility or forgiveness, sidewalk permits designed with ease of use in mind. It's the totality of these types of incidents that will really make a difference in moving the needle. So the bottom line is no solutions are too small. Moving on to how we do this work. So something that Bob has emphasized with our team and with our stakeholders, ranging from when we were first talking about the concept of a task force or recovery initiative, was really about the importance of how we do the work. Of course, the end result is critical and the reason why we're all doing this. But really, it's in how we get there that I think we're going to really discover the secret sauce. This isn't about coming up with recommendations for government to fix everything. There's a really deep desire for people to connect, especially after so many months of being in isolation and a general goodwill to make a difference. And so the ideas and the solutions that come forward will come from everywhere. It's really the space itself that will be the nucleus. And so outcome measures and recommendations are important, but really the joy is going to be in the journey. And then in terms of serving the local community, there are really great efforts underway. There's the governor's task force that just released a really important report. There's the county recovery initiative. There's the San Mateo County Economic Development Association that produces action plans and resources. Really, really great work underway and there's value in leveraging those existing efforts and that are taking place regionally. But there's also value in taking a more localized approach that considers all of the things that make the coast side unique. Sometimes those things are challenges. Sometimes there are natural resources. But regardless, what makes this initiative different and unique is the lens from which we're, we're viewing it. So part of this is being committed to long-term success and actionable outcomes. But in the short term, the real hope here is that the impact will be felt by people who live and/or work on the coast. Next slide, please. So the Coastside Recovery Initiative really has two primary goals, which are listed here on this slide. The first one addresses the immediate needs of COVID. They're very specific to the pandemic. The second one, advancing strategies, this is in regards to long-term sustainability. So there are things that we know from firsthand experience that are out of our control, like wildfires and pandemics. And prior to those, we experienced the power shut-offs. There are many things that are not within our control. But what can we put, how can we put the coast side economy in a position to not only survive uncontrollable events, but to thrive? What policies can we implement? What relationships do we need to build? How can we put ourselves in a position where no matter what comes our way, we can pivot accordingly? And we can, we can do well long into, into the future. Next slide, please. So short-term objectives for 2021. Some of these spoke to some of our guiding principles earlier, such as convening a diverse multi-sector recovery task force. That goes back to inclusion and equity, gathering, gathering new perspectives around the table, being informed by and contributing to the other recovery initiatives that I mentioned previously. So there are city staff and there is nonprofit coast side representation on that large county initiative that I mentioned earlier. And that goes both ways. So it's great to be that discussion table because we can bring forth the point of view of underrepresented communities here on the coast on more of a macro level and make sure that when resources are being allocated or decisions are being made, that the coast is not left behind. And then going the other way, there's county and representation at a more, at a larger regional level, participating here on our task force in the form of executive oversight committee members. And so they too can take back information, but without duplicating efforts. So we're really proud of leveraging those relationships. We want to create a positive brand for this initiative. This initiative is going to be successful if there's momentum, if there's good energy, if there's optimism. And so we want to create a space that makes people in the community want to make a difference, want to do something new and different and exciting. Securing grant funding, determining local impact and unmet needs. This is going to take the form of research as well as some very strategic focus groups. And then what we learn from those focus groups will then determine recommendations that are consistent with our project goals. Next slide, please. Some longer-term objectives include the city and the chamber working together. We've worked together for a long time. I would say we have a great relationship. We meet officially once a week, but I think more realistically talk on pretty much a daily basis. So really, this is about how we manage moving forward and how we want our roles to evolve beyond 2021. We also want to develop strategies to retain and attract business. We definitely want to ensure that we're in alignment with the land use plan that was recently approved by the city council and will hopefully soon be certified by the coastal commission. So the land use plan will be a really critical document and concept that will provide land use context for all of this work. And then we want to create vibrant commercial and community spaces. This came up a lot during the listening sessions, not only last year, but in prior years, the concept of a vibrant downtown and really influenced some of the wording and thinking that made economic development a council priority last February. We want to make this inviting, not just for tourists, but really for community members, so they can enjoy things here. And when I say that, I think of another project, like Carter Park is a great example. How lovely for people to come here to attend Summer's End and theater performances, but also how lovely for people who are already here to enjoy these kind of opportunities instead of having to go over the hill or go up north to San Francisco. Create career ladders for key industries. So I have heard this a lot and I think many of you will be able to relate to this, but many coast siders start a career and they, they hit a point in their career where they have to go over the hill or they have to go elsewhere for advancement. So what to do about that? How do we create work opportunities for people who live on the coast and want to work on the coast as well? And then it goes the other way. What about people who work on the coast but then would love to be able to work here, but they're unable to? So looking, taking a hard look at some of those career ladders and what's feasible for the coast. And then finally, improving the digital infrastructure. So in regards to the pandemic, it's definitely demonstrated that access to not only quality and affordable internet, but also reliable internet and devices is really critical to success in not only school, but in business. And we really need to get ahead of this if we hope to support a sustainable, long-term recovery. Next slide, please. So to assist in facilitating the initiative, the city has hired a local consultant. She has 25 years of experience in advancing community impact strategies and program design and evaluation and finance management, among many other skill sets. And she was most recently the chief community impact officer and executive vice president of community impact at Silicon Valley Community Foundation. And so with that, I warmly turn it over to Erica Wood. Erica?
Thank you, Karen. Good evening, council. So nice to be with all of you and to be working with city staff and the chamber and county on this really important effort. This is our final slide for you all and basically what we wanted to give you a sense of what we're going to be up to over these next several months. And it's important to say, we recognize we're doing this work at a point in time that is dynamic and ever-changing. So we will go as fast or as slow as we need to depending on community needs. I'm pleased to say that we've already gotten some important work done and that includes a project briefing both with our executive oversight committee that happened a couple of weeks ago and tonight, this briefing for council. So in some ways, we see this first step as our soft launch of the initiative, if you will. We then move into the more public launch of the initiative. We then move into the more public launch of the initiative, which will occur on February 11th with a community open house. And the purpose of that community open house is really to build awareness and support for this initiative and to have as many of our community members, friends as possible. And we hope to engage them in some smaller group discussions about their aspirations for economic recovery and longer-term resiliency. We're pleased that our very own Lenny Mendonza has agreed to provide keynote remarks. Many of you know him as our, our local business owner of the Half Moon Bay Brewery, was recently senior economic advisor to Governor Newsom. And we've asked him to really set some context for the open house and provide some inspiration and comments about why this work is important for us to be undertaking at this time. We're hoping that you, Mayor Brownstone, will provide some words of welcome at the beginning and that as many of you on the council will be able to join us. So from the public launch on February 11th, we then will turn to more focused work with our recovery task force. This is really a critical advisory body for this effort. And importantly, we'll be asking task force members to advise us on who do we need to talk to about the economic impacts of COVID-19 here on the coast side? And what are the unmet needs? And what data should we be collecting? And then importantly, this group will help us develop a set of recommendations that we can act upon. Karen mentioned, we're really looking to establish a diverse group. We've thought through a number of criteria for task force members. And I'll just note one for purposes of this evening's presentation, which is, you know, we really want people who have an interest in this topic and a willingness to look at recovery issues broadly and help us advance solutions that are for the greater good and go beyond personal interests. So that'll be an important criteria. From that task force meeting, which we will launch in February, we will then be turning our attention to data collection. Karen mentioned, we'll be doing that through a set of key informant interviews, some strategic focus group conversations. We'll also be looking at what has been learned around recovery from other countywide initiatives, from other communities engaged in these kinds of efforts and other publicly available sources of data. So that will take us through the end of March. Then we'll have lots to look at, we'll have lots to analyze. We'll use our recovery task force and oversight committee members to help us make meaning of what these findings are pointing to and ultimately generate a second, a set of recommendations that will benefit the community. Something Karen said that I just want to reiterate is this is not an effort to have a group come together and put recommendations in front of city council to, to implement. This is really intended to be a process that generates recommendations that we all own and we all have a role to play in creating the kind of economy that we want. The last thing I'll say is that challenges abound. 2020 threw a lot of curveballs our way. 2021 has gotten off to a rocky start. And I think, you know, through this initiative, we really have an important opportunity to create a sense of hope about the future we'd like to see for both the coast-side economy and community. So with that, we'll open it up for questions from council members.
Who would like to start?
I'll start. This is a wonderful presentation. I want to say thank you to Karen Decker and also to Erica. You know, I think it's, it's very detailed. It's very well thought out. I don't have a lot of questions about process and, and I agree that the, the joy is going to be in the journey here. I think that's a really good way to look at it. I would like to just get a little more elaboration on what you anticipate or what your target outcomes are. So maybe they're not specific recommendations and strategies and goals and objectives and things, but, you know, if we want to move forward to implementation, what do you envision the outcomes and how do you move forward from there? If you could just elaborate on that a bit.
I'm happy to jump in and obviously Karen and Erica, and I think Bob, Bob's been putting a lot of thought into this as well. You know, I think to Karen's point and, and Erica really supported that, that the recommendations and the implementation plan out of this will be in, in a lot of different areas. There will be certain recommendations, I believe, that will come forward around city process and the work that we do and maybe some things we can do to incentivize and support our existing businesses as well as incentivize new types of businesses to come into Half Moon Bay. I believe that there will be some recommendations that need to go to the legislative level, you know, to, to work with our local and state representatives, our county and state representatives, to look for changes in legislation that might help allow our economy here to grow and, and change and become more resilient in the long term. But I also think there's going to be recommendations that come out of this for things that businesses can do to be more resilient and to maybe better serve the coast-side community and not just cater to tourists. Things that the chamber can do to better support businesses, our downtown association, our hotel business improvement district. And then I think there, there could be recommendations for members of our community, maybe commitments community members make to shop local first or to be more involved in downtown events and, and different activities that promote local business and local activities. And then I think one of the things we've mentioned is this is not just about business and, and working with businesses, but it's also thinking about our workforce. And how do we better support them? So there may be recommendations that the school district and the adult school need to look at to better prepare members of our community to transition into different types of jobs. Recommendations to work with, you know, the workforce investment board that the county has and, and the service provider they have with that. So I know that none of that gets terribly specific, but I think there will be categories of recommendations that range from things that the city and county can do to support businesses here on the coast to things that the chamber and business groups can do to better support the businesses here on the coast and invite new business in. And things that our workforce and, and people that support our workforce can do to, to change the way we really manage the economy here on the coast. I think we're always going to be a tourist economy. That's, you know, we have the natural resources that really invite that. And, and the question is, how do we better manage that economy and the impacts that it has on our local residents? But also, what other opportunities do we have to bring other types of business and industry to the coast side to help us weather storms like we've gone through and, and make us more resilient through all types of economic downturns and, and natural disasters and the like? Does that start to answer your question, Debbie?
Yeah, I, I just want to add that I think, um, I think it's important to, you, you haven't called it out as an inventory of need, but to understand what are the needs of our, our business community? Right? And, and, and the patrons of those businesses, what do people need? I, I think that's important to understand that. We can't really come up with solutions until we understand needs. And I'm also guessing that there may be recommendations for actual capital improvements. You know, that might come out of these, this sort of informal inventory of needs, like whether it's, faster internet or improvements to the downtown landscape. But I, but I expect some of that will come out of there too. But no, I, I kind of get the broad approach. But let's not waste an opportunity to, to really, you know, get to know each other and what our needs are. That's all. I, I'm really happy that we're going to be going through this process. And I'm, I'm really happy with the work that's been put into it on top of everything else that's going on. So thank you.
You, Councilmember Penrose.
Yeah, I would like to say thank you to Karen and welcome aboard Erica. I am very excited that you have decided to join us here. I think your expertise is going to be critical in helping us develop this in the way that will make it effective. I think that my excitement about this comes from the idea that we are going to be looking at encouraging individual community members to come forward and participate in the process in a very active way. I, I think if we were to keep this as a council, staff, and chamber project, it, it wouldn't have what we need, which is innovative ideas. And we've got, living here on the coast, brilliant people from every walk of life, doing, you know, wonderful work. Often, the work they do is over the hill. I'd like to see them bring that energy back from over the hill and apply it here in Half Moon Bay where they live. So that part of the project is extremely exciting to me. I'd like to have some idea of what you're talking about when you talk about a task force. Is, are we talking about a single task force? And if so, what number of folks are you envisioning? If you could give me a little bit of information about that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, I can speak to that. So we are talking about a singular coast-side task force that will have a fairly simple application process. For those of you that are familiar with NET, the NET Academy, that had a similar application process as well. Just so that the executive oversight committee that's comprised of chamber, city, and county representation can just look in a holistic way at some of those guiding principles I talked to about. So, you know, being equitable, being inclusive, making sure that we have good sector representation and other really important cross-sections. So this group of folks will meet on a regular basis. This is not a Brown Act meeting and we don't have a cap on the number of participants. We're thinking something in the range of maybe a dozen to 16 or 18, something like that. And we don't want it to be too large because some of the criticism and the constructive criticism that we've read about in other efforts that have taken place that weren't necessarily deemed very successful was that they got to be so great in size that it was no longer manageable. There were so many cooks in the kitchen. It was so hard to drill down on specific outcome measures that would be something meaningful, that would be something beyond something that, you know, results in recommendations sit on a shelf. And, you know, people's time is really valuable. And so we want to make sure that the efforts that people put into this, that this is not just talk that comes to nothing. So manageable in size, meeting, we have our loose, loose plan that takes us through the spring, through the June timeframe. And then I think we'll have to stop and reassess. The executive oversight committee that's been mentioned a few times will be meeting in between the regular task force meeting and meetings, and we'll participate in those task force meetings as well. Just to provide oversight and leverage relationships and just make sure that logistics occur to keep things moving forward. Did that answer your question?
It did. Thank you very much.
Yes, Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. It's mostly about comments. I really liked your presentation. When you were presenting, you know, I was, I was daydreaming about this economic recovery from before community, you know. One of the things that we have seen, you know, in our, our communities, we have a lot to offer. You know, Half Moon Bay, the coast side, we have a lot to offer, you know. And I think, you know, this is an opportunity for a lot of members of our community to come forward and start offering what they know, what they have. One of the things, you know, we see every weekend, I see it, the traffic. A lot of traffic that comes from Half Moon Bay comes from, comes from the south. Santa Cruz, Pescadero. So thinking about what do we have to do to make sure that traffic stays in Half Moon Bay? You know, make sure that traffic leaves Half Moon Bay. So make it attractive. Make it attractive for, you know, for people from over the hill to come to Half Moon Bay. We have, you know, arts and crafts, music, food, and everything you can think of. We have it here in Half Moon Bay. A lot of innovative ideas, you know, are, are coming up. A lot of people want to start doing, a lot of business startups, starting a new business. You know, it's about offering, you know, and giving the opportunity to people that have something to offer. Like I said, we have a lot of, we have great musicians in the area. We have, you know, the restaurants, you know, downtown, the restaurants on, on our coastline, you know, delicious food. No, so as you were doing this presentation, it was like just thinking about how our summer would look like. You know, having maybe restructuring or, you know, downtown area on, on the weekends. We can set up local restaurants on our side streets out of Main Street. Having music at the Matutra Plaza. You know, so I'm really looking forward to this. And just my, my question is, and I'm hoping you're going to do this bilingual, right? Because we have a lot of members, you know, on a Spanish-speaking community that also have a lot to offer. And they would love to be part of this as well. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for those comments.
Harvey, did you want to add anything at this point?
I'm, I'm excited that we actually going to recover. And I'm also excited that Erica is local. I think that's really important. When people have skin in the game, when it really means something to develop within the community that they live in, they're even more motivated. So I think we're all understand that we need to improve the business community in Half Moon Bay. We need to keep more people here. We need to have more cultural events. So all of this is positive and I'm excited by it. Thanks.
Thank you. Estoy bilingüe también. Así que vamos a, vamos a tener conversación en español.
Muy bien, muy bien.
Joaquin, I think that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Harvey. You know, second to helping us get through COVID, which is actually a piece of this. In fact, in the same way that we, you know, have a LCP, which is looking at, it's, it's a blueprint for all the development, you know, looking forward here on the coast. And to me, this is like, you know, this is the LRP, the Local Recovery Plan. This is the blueprint. It is one of the most important things we will be working on. And, you know, in terms of the most important outcomes, yeah, you know, I think Matthew mentioned a few and all of us have mentioned a few. But, you know, I think community engagement and commitment is really the most important. I mean, you know, what energizes, what incentivizes people to get excited? You know, we have incredible amount of talent in this community. And I also think this community is characterized by a willingness to volunteer. People will lend their expertise. You know, we have a chamber of commerce, you know, we might end up with our own mini SBA, you know, business people who are successful or retired, helping folks. I think there's a lot to learn from people having worked remote for quite a while now. People have actually had to run their business remotely. So there's a really great amount of expertise, you know, how do you market and sell your products remotely? When you can't have the same amount of foot traffic into your stores, right? And I think we have experts on that, you know, who can help. So there, there's so many terrific potential outcomes. And yeah, I think we're really fortunate to have two incredible folks, Karen and Erica, leading this. I mean, we are really fortunate, I think. Just how you both present things and how you think of things will really be engaging for folks. From how we facilitate meetings, how we make sure things, you know, move along, how we pilot programs, you know, how we prioritize. I think you're both incredibly skilled at that. And, you know, I feel this initiative is in terrific hands. And, you know, I feel this initiative is in terrific hands. I don't say that lightly. And, you know, once in a while, might have to take a step backward here and there to be able to move forward quickly. I think that's normal. This is an enormous task. I think the community will be very excited about, and I hope we create more avenues to keep the community very much abreast of what we're, you know, what's going on, how they can get involved. And that's, we'll keep, keep that energy going, you know, and some people might get exhausted once in a while, have other folks to back them up when they need a break, you know, and this will probably be one of the most exciting endeavors we'll be on this year and moving forward. So and the music, you know, Joaquin and I, we're always talking about, you know, we want, we want to see some music on the streets. So we can do some videos and say, hey, here's what you missed last weekend, Half Moon Bay, if you'd bothered to walk downtown, you know? And it might be a while before you can even have outdoor dining, but you know, we could interview somebody. Hey, what did you order from here? What did you order? Hey, how'd you like it? It's almost such easy stuff to get people excited to want to be a part of that, right? So, um, you know, the stuff that we, we can trust our intuition, what makes us feel happy walking down the street before COVID, you know, and what engages us. So so I thank staff, leadership for taking this on and prioritizing it and I'm really looking forward to it. So thanks, everybody. I think you're on mute, Bob. Still can't hear you, Bob.
How about now?
Perfect. Thank you.
That was weird. We, we may, we, there's still a few members of the public here, so we may see some hands raised, but I'll just make some concluding observations. As I watched the presentation, I agree with all the comments that were made and I'm really excited about this endeavor. So it was really great for me to see Karen and Erica's report, just as, as you did. To, to follow up on the question that Councilmember Ruddock asked, which was a very good question, and it always helps to go last when someone asks a hard question. It was one I definitely had to think about it. So I'm glad that Matthew went first on that. And then I also want to underscore a very important point that Councilmember Jimenez made. So on Councilmember Ruddock's question, what are the outcomes we're looking for? I thought it was just a great question and Matthew answered it. And then Councilmember Ruddock also kind of emphasized, I think, an answer to her own question. But absolutely, we see initially in either the open house or when the task force is, is, is settled, initial activities that ask those questions, almost a visioning process with the business community because of what we've been through. And we were talking about it today and I said, you know, oh, we should do a SWAT analysis, which is a little cliche, but you know, it's, there's going to be a twist on it because we've just gone through this pandemic. And the fundamental questions for businesses about their needs is, is what have you learned and what happened to you? And what, what was bad about it and what also presented opportunities out of COVID? And so those questions to the business community are just vital for this process going forward. So I'm really underscoring, I think, comments that were already made. But I also, well, over the holiday, I, I was doing my best to look into the future and, and sometimes you do that by, by going to the past and, and reading history books. And what I, what I have found, and this is the underscore of Councilmember Jimenez's point. I, I believe that what we're going to see in the next few years and what we really need to capitalize, I think the entrepreneurial spirit that is going to go forth in the next three to five years is going to be something that we, we have never seen before in this nation. I really believe that, that we're coming on, on a renaissance, if you will, out of this pandemic. And so I just wanted to underscore Councilmember Jimenez's point on entrepreneurship. We're here as the city to facilitate, incentivize, you know, stay in our lane to do our part. But the spirit that's going to come out of people when they, when they get back out of their houses and start to socialize again and start to make connections again and start to think about how they can promote new businesses and reinvent their old businesses, I think is going to be something we have just never seen before. So we do have a role, I believe, in doing all that. So then full circle to Councilmember Ruddock's point on, on our role. Absolutely, we will incentivize. The land use plan does a lot of that. We will be a facilitator in looking at our ordinances, our rules, helping to facilitate those new kind of businesses. And then to her last point, we will also ourselves have skin in the game. There will be probably recommendations that are expenditures of the city. And so, so we do envision a, a report that would come back to the city, to the city council for approval. And there may be some longer term expenditures, like a complete revitalization of the infrastructure on downtown Main Street. So there could be some longer term expenditures that come out of this. And those obviously will come back through the normal priority setting process of the council and the budget setting process. So those are the final observations I wanted to make as I listened to the, the conversation. And I thought it was a great presentation. I'm just really glad the council is excited about it. And we, we look forward to just getting the community excited about it.
Great. Anything else? I don't, I don't think we have any raised hands from the community. I just took a look. So with that, thank you. I think it's a great topic to finish, get close to finishing our meeting tonight. By the way, for those who aren't familiar with the term, city manager, this bit mentioned the SWAT analysis. And that refers to four parts to a SWAT analysis, you know, what are current strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And sometimes it's a good precursor to give everybody an idea like, hey, here's some of the things we have in our favor and here's some things are challenges and gets everybody thinking, you know, about things that we may know about as staff. People participating, you know, from the general public might not be as informed. So, but that's what's meant by that. And it can be a very useful tool to start out. So thanks for bringing that up. Okay. So we're going to move on to any commissioner committee updates for us. I don't think I see anybody. Hands raised? No. Topics for future discussion, possible agenda items? I get a feeling our plates are going to be pretty full moving forward. So anyone dare to add to it at this point? And again, we're always welcome to bring up, you know, future agenda items as we move along over the next few weeks. Any other city council reports? I don't think we have any. Oh, sorry.
So last week I was appointed by CKEG to be a member of the resource management and climate change committee. And this committee meets once a month and talks about and advises on energy and resource protection, climate change, sea level rise, just, you know, resource, resources in general and advises CKEG on these issues. Policy informs its transportation plan, that sort of thing. So and I understand that Harvey's been appointed to a member of LAFCO.
I was just going to say and invite Harvey to share it too, please.
Share it, Harvey.
Tell us about that.
LAFCO is the Local Agency Formation Commission. And it's involved with agencies that have overlapping jurisdictions that might be duplicative. And it, it's meant to be an efficient way to vet a lot of local agencies, whether it's councils or fire departments or sanitation districts. And I had been a alternate. I'm now a voting member. And I will do whatever I can to get the coast side's point of view across to the, the rest of the commissioners. So I'm excited to be on that. Thank you.
Well, one, thank you for both being willing to serve. Congratulations on getting appointed. Very proud of the fact that we have some local folks on those organizations and yeah, really look forward to future report outs, you know, as to what's going on so you can stay on top of things and support you in those roles as much as possible. So thank you very much. And wow, is that it? Okay, time of the German, nine twenty-three.
I'd like to congratulate our new mayor, Robert Brownstone, and our new council member Joaquin Jimenez for an excellent meeting.
Thank you. Thank you all for helping me get through it. And thank you for staff for getting me set up and all of us for this. So congratulations to enter 2021 with some great thoughts and ideas and people have a good sense hopefully of what we're doing. And thanks, everyone. So good night, stay safe, enjoy tomorrow's.
See if no one dies.
That's right. Stay in peace.
Tomorrow.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Take good care. Good night.